It is 10 o'clock and this meeting of the workshop, council workshop, is now in session. And I am going to ask the city manager, Mark McDaniel, if he will begin.
Let's do this from the podium. This is an important day and I've even got a script for it. It's that important. I want to welcome all the visitors. Today you're going to learn a lot more about a proposed public-private partnership for purposing the AC Shriner House and the new anchor, a history-related venue on the campus, the Butthead-Holdsworth Memorial Library. We have lots of stakeholders present and I'll ask you to wave your hand when I call out the different boards. Library Board, Main Street Board, we've got folks from Kerrville Farmers Market, the Kerrville Urban Trail System, and the board of our prospective partner, the Heart of the Hills. And so y'all can, okay, great. And Bill Rector will introduce that group in more detail later. So this project has been a couple of years in the making, starting with the unanimous support of the prior city council and the ongoing support of this council. It is a specific action item in Kerrville 2050. Actually, Item D 1.6 calls for the support of new anchors in the downtown, such as the AC Shriner Mansion, to increase public and visitor traffic. Because this venue is a library facility, supporting development of this public-private partnership has been the city staff of Laura Bechtel, who's our library director, as well as Kim Ismer, our executive director for general operations. And they are still hard at work, even now, making application for grant funding to make this project a reality. In a moment, you'll hear from Scott Shellhays, who's been the lead architect on this project. And Scott will present concepts and a budget for purposing the AC Shriner House as a history-related venue. After Scott makes his presentation, you'll hear from Bill Rector. Mr. Rector is president of the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center Board. This organization, along with our existing tenant, the Kerrville Farmers Market, will be our partners or tenants on this project if the appropriate funding is raised. So the entire facility and grounds will remain part of our library system and the Heritage Center and the Farmers Market would be our tenants or managers through new or existing agreements. And then finally, today's also the formal launch of the public fundraising phase for this project. The city is considering matching funds, yet to be determined, but the goal is to have all the funding raised within a year from today. And judging by the reception we've had already from potential donors today, we very well may reach this goal sooner rather than later. And now I'd like to turn it over to Scott Shellhays, who will present the concept plans for this project. Scott?
Scott, just, it's all right, come to the podium.
Okay.
But I would like to recognize another individual who is here, General Shellhays, back here. This was, this was the Shellhays' home and a great venue from which to watch the 4th of July fireworks.
That's right.
Good morning, mayor and council. It's been a great pleasure to have an opportunity to work on this project over the past couple of years. And just so thrilled to see the potential that this project has, especially for this property as well as for the library campus. And so part of what we were tasked to do, and we're just going to kind of scan through the first part of the site, is looking at the campus as a whole. And one of the things just wanted to point out with regard to this kind of overall site is being able to join and create the connectivity between the library, existing library campus, the Kerr County Historic Building, as well as the AC Shriner Campus, and also tying that into the Cuts Trail System as the trailhead. And so those were some of the main factors with regard to the site. And so this first slide just kind of shows, gives you an orientation of what we have around us. You know, one of the things I know as we, as a project moves forward is accessibility, pedestrian traffic, vehicular traffic to both the Shriner House as well as to the library is always a concern, and the Farmers Market is a huge concern. So this kind of just demarks about, you know, what we have available. So, you know, the parking garage is going to play a huge and instrumental part of this project in being able to serve both as accessible parking, venue parking, and just complete access to the site as well. So the next slide is just really kind of more of a blow up to give you a sense of, there's a lot on both the Shriner House site as well as the library site. There's a lot of, a lot of things going on. And one of the things that we're looking at, especially from a site context on this project, is really trying to kind of clean it, streamline it, and make it accessible. ADA accessibility, as well as pedestrian-friendly accessibility, and using the grounds for both historic display venues, as well as what the Farmers Market may see currently and in the future, as well as any other activity that could potentially happen on this site. So accessibility is a big one. And the next slide just kind of shows you the same, kind of a blow up of the library campus as well. So I'd like to go ahead and get into the first presentation area. Yeah, I'm going to use this mouse over here. See that? Yeah, there it goes. Okay. What I'd like to do is, I've kind of broken this site plan. I'd like to use is three different categories of how the sites are going to work. We're going to talk about site connectivity, then we're going to talk about the courtyard area is a very instrumental area, and then we're going to talk about the house site. So as a part of the connectivity of the house, the Shriner site, to the library site, is we wanted to make it feel like it's one parcel, one piece of, one piece of property. So currently, the house has a really nice stone fence around it. And what we'd like to do is to continue that fence all the way to the Kerr County Historic Building and create a unification. And that that stone fence can also add as an opportunity for signage, name branding, and then accessibility and controlling accessibility, vehicular accessibility as well, to the sites. And so a part of what you're seeing on the diagram, when you see some of the kind of light yellow area, is that there's kind of this consistency of using materials from the house and kind of flowing back into the library site of both lawn area and kind of crushed limestone. And so we're looking at trying to create that visual connection between both properties. We also want to look at adding, if I can see it up here, over here by the, I say the terraced amphitheater seating by the library is, currently there's some sail awning structures over the playground. And what we'd like to do is to add some of those back over that area so it becomes a little bit more usable and it's not burning in the sun all the time. And so that kind of creates some new interest in that area. Another thing that we definitely want to do is look at cleaning the vegetation across the site, especially from the property line of the house going into the library. There is a lot of overgrown vegetated areas that block the view of that playground structure, as well as what we're intending to happen towards us moving to that, let's say, that northwest side of the library. And so one of the things we'd want to do is to kind of really clean that up. And the purpose is, we're wanting to create that connection from the Cuts Trailhead. And the intent is, if you look on the drawing, is we're coming off of Clay Street, across Water Street, and bringing down through this courtyard is going to be the continuation of this trail. And then you're going to see around this big landscape area, there's kind of a lightning bolt, I'll say, a zigzag ramp system. The intent is that basically from the Cuts Trail, you can come down into the courtyard, you can access anything that may potentially be happening down in here, come up through this zigzag area, and now you're on the backside of the house between the carriage house and the house. And that the trail basically runs that direction and goes into the library. And over on the library site, there is, again, this massive vegetated area that needs to be cleaned up, but then there's a series of some steps and some landings, some kind of slope sidewalks. That's the area that we would like to completely redo and make that the accessible route, again, highlighting areas that we feel are underutilized at the library to gain access down to the river. And so a part of that would be coming down through here, through the playground area, and then you're going to access the river down in this direction. So what we have, and what we'd love to propose is, down in this direction, there's a lot of paving, but there is a little bit of a lawn area next to this library, is to redo that whole area and make a beautiful lawn with some terrace seating out of stone, with some new trees, and create a better connection of a ramp system continuing down here to the river. All right, I'm going to transition and come right over here to the courtyard area of some of the things that we proposed. I think a lot of what we were looking at and working with Outpost is, you know, trying to be sensitive to the site that's there and trying to leave some of the things that are inherent with regard to the natural landscape, that being the terraced areas. There's a lot of stone retaining walls around that area as well, and maintaining that and just working with what we have. So coming off of the proposed Cuts Trailhead, as you come across Water Street, we would have some type of a, kind of a portal or an entry gate into the site, kind of demarking what this is about, about the trailhead, what you're getting ready to enter into, and being able to come down and enter into this courtyard terraced area. But it's, again, it's going to kind of be a system of both slope sidewalks, ramps, stairs, steps, coming down into this area. And really, kind of the terminus of this part of the trail is having a pavilion down in this area. And you'll see some image, you'll see an image of it here shortly, but it's just still up for a design, but kind of give you an idea of what it could potentially look like. But the idea is that that is a multi-use pavilion, both from a city standpoint or anybody that potentially might want to have some event down there, but also for the Farmers Market, has musicians out every Friday, most of the times. It could be a possible area. What we really see is this becoming a great use space. We have shown a couple of pergolas and arbors that are over the existing terraced area, seeing that, you know, people would come out with their lawn chairs and their blankets, come out to the Farmers Market, eat, enjoy, listen to entertainment, or any other type of venue that may be happening at that time. Something down over here, if you've been to the site, I'm going to kind of point down to this kind of area, is there's a current greenhouse at this particular spot. And what we have envisioned is kind of opening that up and it becoming more of a terraced, kind of an outlook or an overlook, and kind of cleaning that area up so that you have some better visualness to the, to the river and to the park across the street, and potentially even setting up some tables and chairs and just enjoying that area. So coming back up to the house site up here, one of the things that we are envisioning is, you know, hoping that it just becomes a site that's really used by both the museum as well as the Farmers Market, and that we just have great pedestrian use and people walking through the site and enjoying it, is looking at possibly controlling some of the vehicular access into the property. So again, what we're looking at is, you know, having openings, there's actually two driveway openings that are there, but we would propose putting up removable bollards so that during periods of time where we do not want vehicles on the site, we protect that and turn it completely into pedestrian pathways. And again, the idea of creating a new visualness of getting away from, you know, that black asphalt, gray concrete look, is that using a kind of a granite limestone chip seal to kind of soften the tone and make it a little bit more eye-friendly. Again, helps in tying the sites all together. The driveways around the house will be maintained for firemen access. We've already met with the fire marshal and have visited the site and have their input with regard to what needs to be done to maintain that accessibility for their purposes. That's in place. And one of the big things that we've have done is, especially from the Farmers Market aspect, is that there have been added two accessible restrooms to the rear of the house that'll be accessed from the ground. They'll be facing the carriage house. So for anybody that's on the site or having any type of site venue, there will be restrooms out there and maybe the porta-potties might disappear. And one of the things that was brought up in a meeting with the Heritage Center is the possibility of gaining a Mooney aircraft that could be put on display. And if, kind of, I've got a circle, it's bouncing around, and right about there is kind of where it's shown. And we have talked of different locations, but we feel that it could be a great, you know, kind of a historic product to have on the site to, one, for visual interest, and as far as where it's located, that it could actually be seen as you're driving by, especially walking by, and kind of be one of those eye-catching elements. Let's go to the next slide. Okay, this is a blow up that kind of shows the use of the Farmers Market. And after meetings with them, we had a feel for the, you know, numbers of vendors, tents, booths that they were doing. And this is a plan that just kind of gives and shows flexibility with regard to the site. So what you see in white, that is kind of bordering up along the front, are 21 locations for tents. The yellow is an area that we would love to see kind of integrated, because again, what it's doing is it's tying and pulling people towards the library as well. But we think it's in an area that after being cleaned up and made a little bit more visual and accessible, would be a great spot for another 12 alternate locations for tents. And then the gray area, the gray tents you see in the back are kind of an alternate location of tents kind of going around the existing driveway back there and maintaining, you know, fire lane access. One of the other things was, we looked at is the red oval areas that you see are areas that we would love for people to congregate and use, especially during the Farmers Market, if, you know, other areas for people to set up, use and enjoy. And then, of course, the courtyard, we'd love for people to use that as well during the Farmers Market. So this is kind of a proposed view. I will say that the image that you see is an actual photograph of the site. I was standing right at the, kind of a gateway entrance off of the sidewalk on Water Street. So it's using the, or showing all the existing terracing that's there, the existing retaining walls, kind of cleaning it up, and kind of the location of the outdoor pavilion. You can see the pergola awnings out over the terrace seating area. And so really, the intent, a lot of this, is keeping what's, a lot of what's there. Let's go to the next one. All right, so this is the fun part. And Linda, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to point to Linda, because Linda Stone was super highly instrumental in helping with this. So I'll say, a lot of what you see as far as demarcations of the areas, the history involved, a lot of the furnishings that are there are instrumental from Linda and then Mark, and that there is a lot. And they do have a lot of information, a lot of things to show. And so it really kind of made it really easy. I'm going to kind of go off a little bit different from the numbering system. So I'll have to say the numbering started, you know, a long time ago, and then it's like, kind of things kind of changed. But if you, if you go to the front door, I'm going to go over. So our front entrance is right over here. When you walk in the front door, you're going to be first exposed to, to your left, or excuse me, to your right, is going to be a historic timeline of everything that goes from the founding of Kerrville to today. And it's going to be both a vertical and a horizontal type system that's going to be displayed on that wall. To the left, and that's, that's demarked as number 117. And when you look to the left, 118 is demarked as a honorary, honorarium, donor wall area as well. But when you walk in, you will be confronted with a, what we're hoping is a digital display system that is going to give you some information about what this museum is all about. It's going to also, if you so choose to, it's going to be one of those that's interactive, that you can use to look and see what is on display, where it's on display, and it's, so it's almost like a digital directory as well. So what, so I'm now going to work our way back to the back over here that's demarked in the 101 area. But this particular area is going to be the gift shop. And the intent is, after kind of looking at how the site's going to work and potentially where large groups may be coming from, we're wanting to use, this is the back of the house, as kind of a staging area, since there's a, you know, a large paved area in the back to use as a staging point for large groups to come in, and that the gift shop can actually be an area used for some orientation and a possible spot to break large groups up into smaller groups to go on tours from that point. But back to the front door. So as you enter, there's going to be an area over here that is going to be ticket sales, information, storage units for people with backpacks, whatever, bags, name it, don't want them walking through with that. So that's kind of that area, as well as the personal touch of if you need information or direction. And then, really, you can just kind of follow along. The dashed line and the arrows will show you the flow of what we have coming through here. So starting, when you get your tickets, you're going to kind of move your way down over to this area of 103, but it's kind of starts from the beginning, from prehistory. Then you move into 104, down into this area where we'll have Spanish influence, down to 105, caves, the German influence, Joshua Brown. We're wanting to have in this area down over here, a, love to have a hands-on shingle, Cypress shingle exercise display. Then moving into a Camp Verde area, then into the Deert kind of zone of 110, that's back over here in this back area. And then we're going to come back into the main room to really kind of go through the ranching side of it with windmills and the ranching of both goats and cattle. Then we're going to run up over here towards the stairway into railroads, and then the tuberculosis. So back up here towards the top, the areas that we have hatched is the existing kitchen breakfast area. And we're hoping is that, that that can also multitask as a catering kitchen for any type of events. It'll be a break room, kind of a workroom, staff area, just kind of a catch-all spot for the, for the museum. We'd love to keep the atrium area. And what we're envisioning is that the atrium area with all the glass becomes some kind of a spot to catch people's eyes, that there are displays up in there that at any time, day or night, they're going to be lit, that will kind of almost be an advertisement zone for the, for the museum. And then what's currently the dining room area back over here at this 116, again, is kind of a multi-use, multitask facility or space. And what we're looking at is that for museum orientation purposes, again, if it's really large groups, you can bring them in there and give them some information. It can also be a classroom, a multipurpose room, a meeting room, and also looking at a display somewhere in there that kind of gives the history of this particular residence, this house, and to kind of go through the, the history of this area. And then we're going to head upstairs. So after you've kind of walked through, if you notice the pathway, you'll end up in the main room. You're going to go right up the stairs to the second level, in the second floor. So depending upon, and I missed on the first floor, we are adding an elevator to, to the building. And because the house is really split level from grade, it'll have a double-sided door on the ground level. And it's been sized so that artifacts and elements that are going to be used inside the museum can be brought in from the ground and lifted to either the ground floor, to the second floor, and even up to the third floor. So if you come up via the elevator to the second floor, or you come up to the stairs, so at the stair landing and outside the elevator, either one, you're going to be given a orientation map, basically a building directory of what's where and how to go and to proceed. The layout's kind of based on if you walk up the stairs. So when you walk up the stairs, you're going to be going into an area that will talk about kind of our business and startup, and what we were thinking of were some, you know, the historic businesses of Kerrville, as well as current businesses of Kerrville. So like HEB and James Avery and Mooney, or, and then one of the other elements that they've been working on are these, the Portal of Texas, the recorded historic videos, would be in this area of what we're calling 202 to 203, coming out in that area. Then the area of 203, that's up here, is we're looking at kind of a rotating exhibit. And what we're hoping to kind of, I guess, demark in this area would be local families. So going back from the Shriners to the Butthead, to the Avery's, Petersons, and Tyvey, this area could work and rotate exhibits as they become available. And then moving down into this next room, 204, is really a military service area for honoring our military. The, there's some outdoor patios, as well as the, there's an area that's over the Portico share at the front. And we really don't know exactly what we're going to do, but the idea is that we would love to put some type of static displays out there so that they're visually seen through the windows. There's plenty of windows, and we'd love to be able to put some things out there that kind of play off of what's on the inside of the rooms that you're currently in, that you can see through, and that they would be visual from the street as well, and create that visual interest to the space. And then as we move into the Then as we move into the, down, it's right down through here, so we're coming in, and we're gonna hit these spaces, but space 206 would be kind of our science zone, and 207 is gonna kind of be our, our local artists, as well as writers for display. And then the big hatched areas in the back is a rotating exhibit space, something that will always be changing and new. And then, so we work our way back into this room over here, where we were thinking about having the hospital, the history of the hospital to Kerrville, and then in this back area, back by the elevator, would be kind of our music zone, folk festival, and kind of demarking some of the famous music artists from the community. Third floor. So third floor is really gonna be museum, staff, and there are some areas for, potentially for meeting, but the idea is that we have some research spaces on the third floor. We have archives and storage systems down through the center area here, office workstations, but we do have a spot for a meeting room, fairly good size, and then offices for the museum. And then again, we have access to the third floor via our elevator system here. So here are some visual images of when you walk in the front door on the, the ground floor. To the left was the check-in ticket desk, and so you'll see, here's our little interactive There. Kind of our building directory and everything you ever needed to know about, it's gonna be on that. So back here in the back, you can see some of the elements, and I will say again, these images were done from real photographs, so as you see the detailing, columns, beams, walls, brick, they're all there. So the intent is to do as little change to the building as possible. Next one. So this is a view from inside the, what is the living room of the house, so the fireplace is to our backside here, looking back towards the ticket information area, and some of the artifacts, and the furniture that you see in the imagery is some of the furniture that the, already exists for the Heritage Center. Again, part of the ranching and the trail system, we have, oops, to get a covered wagon, that'll be in display in there. Next one. And this is on the first floor, back in the, what used to be an old outdoor patio area, but this is our, from the floor plan, this would be area looking at, from the 104s would be to your right in that image, and 109 would be to your left. So it's kind of looking at that long L-shaped open space of displays and elements there. And then the next image is gonna be our second floor, so when you walk in, second floor from the stairway, you'll see the, our science area is there to your left, and our artists, you can see, is to the back left, and then as you see through that image, our rotating exhibit area would be back here in the back. And, federal past image. Yeah.
That's a lot.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, there's, kind of lost my spot there. But yes, that, so that's kind of our concept of, of what we're, we're thinking about. One of the things that was pretty, I think humorous, when Linda and I, we were meeting about this, was the, that the first floor happens to be all 1800s. Second floor is 1900s and beyond. So you do have kind of a split in how the museum is, is laying out.
Okay, so I think we have Bill Rector next to talk about the Heart of the Hills.
All right, okay.
Are you gonna take any questions for this?
You know what, yeah, let's, let's take, take some questions, just a minute, Bill. The, I heard you talk about the ranching section. Will there be a particular emphasis on rolling mohair as part of the history of Kerr County and this area?
I believe we talked about that, didn't we? Yeah, that there's a, there's a section in there about, about that mill.
Well, it's just, it is so important for this area. You know, in regard to mohair, if you look at this county, and the counties to the immediate west and north was producing majority of mohair for the rest of the, of the country. And let me just say, aside to that, when you're talking about the, the outside area, I would, it's been a long dream of mine, have, this would be just occasional kind of special sort of thing, have a petting zoo where kids could actually see sheep, goats, and then where that goes into cloth and so forth, you know, some display of that. Anyway, that's, that's, doesn't matter.
Oh, yeah, and that's, that's all, we, we really discussed about, you know, the opportunities that the site actually has for hands-on, e- even if it's something that's just kind of brought in for a day, or for, you know, like a Saturday, to have some type of an exhibit that's a hands-on opportunity is yes. There's so many places on that site that can, that can do that and make it a destination area.
Well, I've got another, another question, that is, is, I heard you talk about a Spanish section. Is there a, so is there a section on Hispanic history and African-American?
Yes.
Okay.
There is.
All right, good, good.
I mean, then on the second floor, didn't we?
We're gonna separate it out, where it's all a story within the story.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna kind of keep that all integrated together. Yeah, forget, yeah, that's exactly right, a story within a story. Yes.
I had a question about parking. I assume you'll just try to focus on the garage?
Yes.
Okay, which, it's, it's there, it's 439 spaces, or whatever the number is exactly, but, so that's good. We'll just, I guess, it'll draw, the, the people will come, and that's where the park gets covered, it'll have a great walkway to gain access. The other question I had was the wood flooring, would we, are y'all planning on trying to preserve and keep the original wood flooring?
Yes.
That I saw in the picture, okay.
Yeah, exactly.
Good.
Yeah, one of the things, I'll say on parking, is that, you know, since we're maintaining the drive systems in there, that, you know, we were looking at putting a couple of accessible parking spaces off towards, let's say it's kind of in front of the carriage house, towards the library, that, that we have opportunities for different places for accessible ramps in this building, around this building. We were leaning towards having one kind of towards the back door area, so that would make sense as to where we showed, we showed the, the parking, that we have a ramp back in there. But we're still thinking about leaving the drive at the Portico Share for drop-off as well. There was a discussion with the fire marshal of potentially moving that drive just in front of the structure as, as a drive-through, so we basically pull them out from not driving underneath the building, but out in front. That's another opportunity that, you know, we'll potentially look into. But we're keeping that there and trying to make it easy for people if they do want to drop off, and hopefully the orientation of knowing where you need to go. If you do need accessible parking, it'll be signed, but hopefully, yeah, pushing people towards the garage.
Okay, counsel, do you have questions of Mr. Shellhase about what he's presented?
I do. I'm just curious specifically about the crushed granite that you were talking about, and you talked about a chip seal, so I guess my question is really just about walkability for people of all ages, and what that would actually look like visually as well. Because, I mean, crushed granite kind of has, you know, but the chip seal on top, would that, that would kind of...
Yeah, that, the chip seal on top is gonna be pretty hard, so it's gonna be like walking on...
It's gonna make a smoother surface when you seal it.
It's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be a lot smoother, since it's gonna kind of be pressed in as well. The crushed granite outside, it can be done in different layers, so that you have more firm versus it being more giving, and a lot of places you see it where it's really more giving, and there, there is cost involved with regard to how you deal with throwing it in and just leaving it versus you do kind of compact it to make it where it's, it's more stable. And there's also different levels of what you see in, in the product as far as, not as rocky, I'll say, you know, the larger granules versus fine, a little more fine pieces that are not like sand, but you know, closer you get, and you get to that sand, it's, it's more firm.
Yeah, yeah. And then the maintenance on, on that would be continual, I assume?
Yes.
Yep. My one question, or comment, I guess, is that, and I know it's a preliminary concept, and there's a lot of work still to be done, but from the ADA accessibility, I, first time I toured that building, I was like, it's gonna be a real challenge. I'm not a big fan of making them come in through the back door, so if there's any way to do it. I know you talk about a drop-off, but you've also talked about bollard, putting bollards in on that road, those two don't work well together. So I think that really needs to be thought through.
Okay.
If we can bring ADA in through the front door, I would be much more in favor of that.
Okay.
I know it's not architecturally beautiful, but I think that's important.
There, there's, there's three different opportunities, so it's, yeah, just need to be studied and what works best.
I know it's preliminary, but that's, those are my comments.
Absolutely.
My questions have been answered.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Bill Rector, if you would speak to us.
Thank you, counsel, it's a real honor to be standing here today, there's a lot of work that has gone into this. Scott has been tremendous to work with, he's tremendously talented, and we've had a lot of people off of, with our board who have worked with him and have developed the product that you see today. But I would like to tell you a little bit about the organization that you are going to be partnering with. I'd like to talk with you about Heart of the Hills Heritage Center and tell you a little bit about it. We have a lot of old buildings in Kerrville, many of them are recognized by the state, with state historical markers, and there, we are just very gifted with all of these beautiful historic buildings, but we are one of 254 counties, there's 254 counties in the state of Texas, and we're one of six that has no museum. And as Mr. Herring will tell you, since 1920s, there's been several attempts at developing museums in Kerrville, but today we have none. So several individuals, back in 2016, came together and said, let's see what we can do about developing a museum for our community. And it started with focus groups. Focus groups were advertised in the paper, there were articles in the paper, and individual that were interested came together in the basement of the K E C C, and on October the 16th, 2016, we had the first focus group session. A lot of ideas came out of that, and we had session number two on December the 6th, 2016. And a lot of ideas came out of the focus groups, probably 150 to 200 people participated in those groups. And out of that group came several things, but one of the most important was a survey. And the survey found that 93% of the people in Kerrville, I believe it's 93, I can't read that exactly.
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight, 98%, felt like that a museum was needed. So help me with the numbers, because my eyesight is not gonna work for me here. So that was one of the things that came out, the, on what should a Kerr County museum focus, the big one was, it should focus on history, it should also focus on families of Kerrville, focus on geology and archaeology. So those were the emphasis points that the survey came up with. But there were a couple of things that were really very, very agreed upon, let's see if I can get my pointer going here. Maybe not, down, down here. There we go. One was that it should be located downtown. It should be in the Water Street, Water Street, Sidney Baker area, it should be part of historic downtown Kerrville. The other thing that was pretty much, 76% of the people felt like that it should either be in a standalone building with some acreage, or it should be in a storefront where it occupies the entire building. So very definite opinions on those two things. So what came out of our focus group was, yes, that a museum is needed, it's worthy of pursuing, and it should be located in the downtown area. But the other thing that came out of the focus group was that this museum needs to be designed as to be sustainable, that from the outset, we need to look at how is this museum gonna continue where others in the past have failed. So what's been accomplished since 2016, that's a long time ago, a steering committee was appointed, and it met multiple times, a name for the project, Heart of the Hills Heritage Center, was developed and was registered with the state, a nonprofit corporation was created, bylaws were created, a logo was developed and adopted, which I'll show you in a moment, conflicts of interest policy was created, we applied for a 501(c)(3) status and were approved, a board of directors was appointed. The Heart of the Hills Heritage Center is going to be governed by a board of directors, there'll be five to seven members in the bylaws, members will serve three-year terms, they can serve on the board twice, a maximum of six years, after that, they have to go off of the board. The board nominates its own members and elects those members by 70% vote. This was modeled after the Peterson Hospital Board. It is a self-perpetuating board, so that the board is not prone to being taken over by a small group of people in the community who have an interest and are able to get the numbers of votes to take over the, the board and to have a clique running this organization. This is a self-perpetuating board that can, is pretty much isolated from that, from that event occurring. Two to four officials are elected yearly, they create subcommittees that's headed by a board member, one member is appointed by the chair of the Kerr County Historical Commission, and one member is appointed by the president of the Friends of the Kerr County Historical Commission. The name Heart of the Hills Heritage Center was selected, a logo was developed by Linda Stone, very, very attractive logo. And we keep looking as we go through this process about sustainability. How do we build into this museum sustainability? And one of the factors is governance. How is this museum, or how is this Heritage Center going to be governed? Board of Directors, Chairman, there will be five to 11 members, but two permanent seats will be the Kerr County Historical Commission Chair or their appointee, and also the president of the Friends, or the Friends appointee. And the reason that that's important is the Kerr County Historical Commission has great talent. They have a tremendous knowledge for, of history, and interest in history, and we want them to be a part of this process. So they have a permanent seat on Board of Directors, there's some of the things that we can look to them for possible help with. We need... We need to utilize that asset. Friends of the Kirk County Historical Commission, also a permanent seat on the board. Their, their job is fundraising. They can help us with that, help us with publicity. Again, great assets to this heritage system. Our current Board of Directors listed here, and they've all been very active in the process that you see presented before you today. We visited and studied other museums, some of which we would like to emulate, others of which we'd like to not emulate. So we, we learned a lot by visiting other museums. We developed a mission statement to tell you, to tell other people what we're about and what we're trying to accomplish. And who do we hope to attract? Number one, we hope to attract children. Unfortunately, children are not born with an innate knowledge of the history of Kirk County, of the place where they are growing up. They only obtain that by education. And they are the future leaders of our community, and we need to educate them as to what they inherited, knowledge of the community that they are going to lead someday. And that's going to be one of our big jobs is educating children. And if we can attract children to this museum, we will then attract parents and grandparents to the museum. The first floor of this facility is designed to be for children. It will be hands-on. It'll be, fourth graders can come and be brought in by teachers. Docents can present ideas to them, present lectures to them, and most of everything on the first floor, they can touch, they can feel, they can pick it up and look at it and understand how it fits into the past of our community. Tourists and visitors, obviously. Charlie McElvein wants to attract more people to Kerrville, and we want those people to come and see this facility. We want it to be attraction, an attraction for visitors to come and visit Kerrville and downtown. And how will we attract them? We are going to have professionally designed exhibits. We'll have a professional curator. We'll have interesting but changing exhibits. So once you've seen this facility, you haven't seen it. You will need to come back to see the changing exhibits. Hands-on objects, especially for children, and an interesting and attractive site is part of what we are so excited about, this partnership. The A.C. Schreiner home is a beautiful, beautiful structure, a beautiful historic structure. And the museum might not just house exhibits, but it might become one. People can come not only to see what's in the Heritage Center, but also to see the building itself. Any questions?
Any questions of Dr. Rector?
You guys have done a great job. Just on the, the sustainability piece?
Yes.
With the, with the financial, since if it's a partnership, will there be ongoing fundraising, or y'all see an endowment, or, you know, what, what do you see making it in the future be financially sustainable as far as that relationship?
Obviously, the key to that is money. You have to not live on a day-to-day basis. We will have fundraising, we'll have Friends of the Heritage Center. Hopefully, we'll also have an endowment. We are looking at raising money that will keep us operational, not just for a year, but operational for generations. That's a very important part of it, and sustainability has to do with the personnel that we have working for us, members on our board, but also the fundraising that we were able to accomplish.
Another question is about, and this may not be for you specifically, but when you were talking about children and field trips, what the capacity is of that facility at any, in any given time, as far as, you know, being able to speak to how many kids?
Scott, do you remember the power marshal?
That can be a one for later if we need to.
You never limited it any time.
However many can squeeze right in. Okay, I have one more question. Would you go ahead and tell us which museums we don't want to emulate?
I would prefer not to.
We don't want to have to visit those?
Let me say that we would not like for this facility to be referred to as Grandma's Attic.
Yeah, yeah, yes. Having, having grown up in San Angelo, Fort Concho became Grandma's Attic, and finally, you know, they had to change that.
Thank you.
I've got another question of Dr. Rector, or may I, from the council. I'm going to go ahead and take one from the audience.
Yeah, if I may, I'm a one-track pony, but...
Mayor, we'll need him to come to the podium so we can hear him.
If you'll come to the podium.
My name, excuse me, my name is Scott Schulter, but I can't talk right now. But in all this discussion of the last 150 years or so of our history, that's only 1% of the human history in this area. Archaeology was listed by Mr. Rector as one of the things that people were very interested in, but I don't know to what extent it's going to be covered. If, if, if what was said today, not one word about archaeology, then you're missing the Big Bend. And when it comes to good museums, I think you mentioned one in Mason, and you mentioned one at Big Bend, those are good museums, and they have archaeology in them.
Yeah.
And the other thing that they have in them is geology. And if the human portion of this museum is 100 times greater than what was portrayed today, the geological history of this area, which is quite interesting, is 10 million times as long, and not one word is said about that. And if you're going to attract tourists as opposed to Grandma's Attic, you're going to have to have something that goes beyond the attic. And the best way to do it is to be more comprehensive in terms of both space, getting in all of Hill Country, and in terms of time, including all of the history of this region.
Thank you. I, there, there is a section for geology, isn't there?
Yes.
Yes, okay. But the other thing I was going to say, given Dr. Rector's brother's long interest in the archaeology of this area, I think we're going to see that reflected in the museum. Would you, would you, Dr. Rector, would you comment?
We're looking forward to working with the Hill Country Archaeology Group and also the Hill Country Geology Group to help us design the exhibits. And part of the first floor is going to be devoted to archaeology and to geology. And one of the things that we like about that is it really appeals to children, it appeals to hands-on, handing-owned of the exhibits. And we heard from these groups and the focus groups, and, and we, we got their message, and we think that's an important part of this museum.
I appreciate that. We did talk to Bill, and he is behind us, but there was nothing mentioned today about it, and there was nothing, certainly nothing in the architectural portion indicated that there was even any space for anything like that. So there's, there's work to be done.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. I, I've got, I've got a question. When I look at all of the preparation and all of the planning and everything else, and we come to the issue of attendance and sustainability, is there a marketing plan?
At this point, there is no marketing plan. We have not gotten to that point. We are at nuts and bolts and really have not looked at the marketing. Maybe we should have at this point, but that has not been a plan that, that we have discussed a lot. I think Laura at the library may have a marketing plan for the campus, and Mark may have a marketing plan, but the Heritage Center has really not talked about that at this point. We really have not created a friend, a Friends of the Heritage Center membership group. We are not looking at that at this point. We feel like that after today, after this announcement is made, that we will be more free to go out and spread the word and begin looking at that type of pursuit.
If I could comment on that too, Mayor? So this, we're just really at a very early stage here. Yes, we've done a lot of concepts, and we've also developed a preliminary budget, but it's probably going to take us a year, hopefully less, to raise the funding necessary. So during that time, we'd be developing a operating agreement with them for this facility, this library facility, and working on, we've already done some rough pro formas and working with them to see how they would fund it, what the sustainability would be. The budget for this project, construction-wise, is 3.6 million. And then we've also set up another $400,000 maintenance endowment that we'd like to raise. And that doesn't include the money that they want to raise for their operating endowment. So we're way, we're, we're just not at the stage yet to be developing marketing plans, but it's, it's definitely something that we need to be doing.
I think one of the things that has characterized this, this venture is that we have been hesitant to throw it out for discussion among the community before we felt like we had the pieces together to do it. And so we really have not gone to the public. We really have not gone to the Historical Commission, we've not gone to the Friends, we have not looked at those groups that we would like now to talk with about supporting this because it was a formative plan, and, and we're, we have tried to maintain confidentiality. I think y'all have discussed it in executive session, but not in open session. So, and we have done the same thing. Our, our meetings have been confidential, and we've, we've worked toward today.
What I would, what I would say, a couple of things. One is, in consulting with nonprofits, I find most nonprofit boards are not very good at, at figuring out the marketing. You need to get somebody who really knows marketing to work with you. And the other thing I would say is that doing your marketing plan as you do your other planning, doesn't mean you're going out public, but as you do your other planning, it, it becomes integrated into, into the whole process, so. But do we have other questions of Dr. Rector? And then we'll go to comments from the...
Question from Mr. McDaniel.
Okay.
Mark, if you could, just, and I know this preliminary, but in broad strokes, what's the city's expense in this project as opposed to the historical center's expense?
Well, we've talked about some ideas, but nothing's been firmed up at this point. So we're, we're raising funds. We've, we've already made some ask of some major donors, and we do have...
Let me clarify my question. I, I'm not looking at it from a construction standpoint, I'm thinking operational standpoint.
I see.
After.
From an operational standpoint, what we, we contemplate, what we've discussed with the board is that we would be responsible for some major mechanical HVACs, you know, which we would do on a large building that we own. But the day-to-day operation and utility bills and janitorial, all that would be on the, the Heritage Center. And so they would contemplate, you know, charging admissions, having fundraisers, rentals, and so on, to be able to, to pay for that.
Grounds would be on Parks and Rec.
Yes, and it already is.
And the endowment, is that the city's endowment for maintenance?
Yes.
Okay, so we would, we would effectively fund out of the, out of an endowment?
That's the idea.
That's the idea.
We would look at a separate endowment for operation.
Thank you.
And one of the things, Bill, that I, I would say, Mr. Mayor, that we have looked at in selecting board members at this point is we have people with various talents on, on our board. And I don't know if we can get back to the board, if that's even possible, but I will, we'll mention that we have David Jones is a business person on the board. We have Charlie McElvein, who's had a little bit of marketing experience. We have a lot of, I think, talent on there. We've got Joe Herring, who's can help us with the museum and make sure that our exhibits are factual. There we go, right there. Julius Neinhoffer is tremendously talented in history, knowing about Kirk County and the families that make up Kirk County. Dr. Wright has led many nonprofits in his great career of entomology. He's a great fundraiser, he's a talent. The Stones have developed many buildings in Kerrville. They know about renovation, they know about history, and they have done a tremendous, Lynn has done a tremendous job in helping design this, this structure. Clifton is a tremendous draw of people to his exhibits, to his performances. He knows how to bring people in, how to show them what they want to see, tremendous asset. Judge Pollard also is an administrator, help us with administration. Linda Stone, Tony Box represents the Kirk County Historical Commission. She has been tremendously helpful in designing the flow-through, through the museum and the various categories. So I think we have a lot of talent. Can we do it all? No, we can't. But we do feel like that we can reach out to other groups to get knowledge from, and one of those groups would be a marketing firm to help us with marketing.
We're going to, thank you, Dr. Rector. We're going to go to speakers that we have, but I just want to say one word about one of your, one of your board members and a sense of history. Julius Neinhoffer yesterday showed me with great excitement, a 1906 telephone battery, wasn't it Julius? And showed me where the date was, and he, he knows history, likes history.
Definitely knows history.
All right. Ms. McElhaney?
Jeremy Walther.
Mayor, council staff, thank you for this opportunity to speak on this exciting day for Kerrville. I'm Jeremy Walther. I'm going to wear a couple of hats today. One is, as one of the founders of the Kerrville Urban Trail System. It's, it's very validating and very exciting to see images that were created by the CUTS Board and everyone involved in the CUTS Designer into this project. CUTS is not working in a bubble. One of the big goals of CUTS is to enhance connectivity and engagement, real engagement in this community. And so to, to see the ideas of CUTS at the trailhead, at that node at Clay and Water Street, integrated into this project is, is very exciting, and, and we're very pleased to see that. The other hat I'm wearing today, the bigger hat, is on behalf of the Kerrville Farmers' Market. And the reason that, that I wanted to speak is, as a vendor, but also as a board member of the market, is to speak a little bit about Katie and Justin Graham, the market directors. If they were going to get up here, they're, they're so humble that they're not going to give themselves the credit that they deserve. And so I want to speak on behalf of them and the market to express our sincere appreciation for the support that the market has received from the city, local businesses, and the Kerrville community as we enter our third year of operations in downtown Kerrville. The Kerrville Farmers' Market is held every week year-round on the grounds of the historic and iconic home that A.C. built for his murder. Most markets in this part of the country are seasonal, but thanks to the dedication of market directors, Katie and Justin Graham, as well as consistent support from the city, core vendors, local businesses in our community, your Kerrville Farmers' Market has become a cultural, economic, and social institution as a free, family-friendly event that kicks off each and every weekend in our vibrant little city. Every Friday, between an average of 300 and 400 guests, visit the market to shop for locally-produced bread, baked goods, cheese, vegetables, herbs, greens, fruit, beef, pork, fermented foods, kombucha, jams, jellies, honey, wine, beer, and other goods produced by local farmers and ranchers. Market guests often stick around to enjoy live music and to mingle on the lawn and the shaded grounds as they ease into the weekend and literally enjoy the taste of Kerrville with their friends and neighbors on historic property. Many of these guests then walk to downtown restaurants and shops. Many of these guests then walk to downtown restaurants and shops, utilize the free public parking garage, the Kerrville River Trail, Louise Hayes Park, and other downtown amenities, turning what would otherwise be a very quick stop into a full night of Kerrville experience. Long-term, the market will grow, both in its offering of locally-produced agricultural goods to the Kerrville community and in its ability to support young, serious farmers in the area, and this is critical. Kerrville and Kirk County need more stewards who employs sustainable land management to produce food for the local community. This is important for natural resource conservation, food security, and preservation of a way of life that historically has shaped our community into what we enjoy as it is today. And so this week, as we approach the 85th consecutive Friday of the Kerrville Farmers' Market at the A.C. and Murda Schreiner Home, we welcome our new neighbors with an energized level of hope and optimism that this iconic home will have new life and contribute a new experience, new vibrancy, and a new level of historic and cultural preservation to downtown Kerrville. We're very excited to welcome them, if for no other reason, so we can finally stop dodging the same question we've heard 85 Fridays in a row. What are they going to do with that? Thank you for giving it life. Thank you for the board, and thank you for the city for your support.
Jeremy grew up here with A&amp;M. He is one of the owners and chief operator of Pint and Plow Restaurant and Brewery and Gathering Place. Okay, do we have another speaker?
Julie Leonard.
Okay.
Well, I can't tell you how excited I am about this project. This has been going on forever, I think. I was part of the steering committee for this when they picked the name and everything and had to back off because I had my duties as chairwoman of the Kirk County Historical Commission. But I can tell you, our members that are here, if God will hold up your hand, how many of us love this project. And we are wholly enthusiastic about it and will support it, and I suspect Julius Neinhoffe could probably fill the whole museum up. And he can empty some of his big storage things out on his ranch. But anyway, I just want to say, I am so excited. It will be a boon for Kerrville and the whole county. We believe in heritage tourism, and this goes right along with that. People come into town, they spend money, they love our area, and they leave. And hopefully, some of them will stay, but not too many. So anyway, we're very excited about this project. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
That's all the speakers that signed up.
Okay, all right. We're not voting, but council, any questions, observations?
I just wanted to, and part of my question has been answered, is the relationship between the city and this group, and also maybe the county and this group. Are they going to have, play a part in this?
So our arrangement would be just with the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center. The way the county is involved is that the Historic Commission's got representation on their board, but our agreement would only be with the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center. We certainly welcome, you know, participation in some ways by the county, but that's the current arrangement.
I have a question.
Okay. And we have, well, we did have two. We have one county commissioner here with us today.
He's...
Yeah, Harley's gone, okay.
I have a question.
All right, yes.
Okay. This is, this will come as a shock to you, I'm sure, but my question, what does it look like now for us? Where do we go at this point? I mean, we've talked about an executive session, you know?
Sure.
Where are we?
So we'll go to work on trying to draw up an operating agreement, management agreement, because again, it's a city facility. We're contracting with somebody to basically manage it for us as a heritage center. They would own the artifacts, we own the building. So we need to go to work on that to make sure that we've got a deal that we can work through there, and we've already had some discussion about it already. We've contemplated what that might look like as far as deal points. And then we're going to need to raise the funds.
When you say raise the funds from the city side, are we talking just endowment funds? Where we get this money in and then we can perpetually fund the maintenance? Are we talking about construction funds on top of that? Or...
We need to have that discussion.
Okay.
So with the fundraising...
That's next steps, okay.
And it's a good question. And that's why I'm saying it maybe would take a year to raise the funds. I don't think it'll take that long, just judging by, you know, what I've seen so far, but I think that we'll have a discussion about how much can be raised privately, and then how much is the council willing to match that.
And then you would have personnel, you know, that would fit into the budget at some future point to manage and just oversee the day-to-day activities.
Right, so that would be part of the management agreement with the board, and they would have their employee, but that would not be our employee.
Okay.
One thing back to what Ms. Eichner asked, the county, city and county, of course, have this interlocal agreement regarding the library, but I would say beyond that, I see a real plus to the county for this, you know, that many places to stay out in the county, and this is one more site for folks to come to, and then obviously county residents. There is another thank you that needs to be given, and that is to Mr. Charles Butt of the HEB family, who gifted this to the library and to the city. And I think that's, that's great. Wait a minute, I'm getting a couple of looks like I shouldn't have said that. All right.
That's what it is.
General Shellhase as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. General Shellhase as well.
Yeah, General Shellhase is parting this, sure.
One question I have is, when the home was built, and the person for whom it was built, do you, somebody have just a real quick history on that?
I was going to say, we have all these historical experts here today, surely.
Dr. Herring will have the answer.
The home was the second home built on that site. It was built for A.C. and Murda Schreiner. A.C. was the eldest son of Captain Charles Schreiner and his wife, Magna Lita. He was the one that ran the store. I'm not exactly sure what happened in the first house, but the second house was built, you remember? 1910s, 1920s maybe? 10? 1916? I don't know off the top of my head, but it was built for a couple. It's a starter home for a couple. They both lived there the rest of their lives.